Consideration of the auto contract for a paid program. You've ushered these discussions before, John. I'm going to pass this to you.
Well, the contract is before us. The decision to engage was made previously. The actual contract is here. I would like to take a moment to say it's been a long and very complex conversation, stretching over four months. It's not the first time we've had this conversation. And we are mindful that good men and women can disagree about tactics and even occasionally about objectives. But the objective of council was to manage our resources and to provide for an orderly, stable, and yes, safe environment. And there's tons of data, despite what some may say, both in terms of the surge in rentals, in terms of the chambers estimate of visitors. More importantly, as Bob Dylan said, you don't need a weatherman to tell you which way the wind's blowing. I mean, we all saw it. And it is something that has to be addressed because it's going to get worse if we don't take action, as we witnessed earlier tonight. There are more developments and more people, and they are coming. We wanted to also preserve the lifestyle, the quality of lifestyle, for people who live there. There are residents who live down there, and they call us constantly during the summer season. And we have an obligation to protect them as well. Then we come to the matter of revenue, which we have not really stressed. But revenue is important because right now, we as taxpayers bear 100% of the cost of the beach and the amenities and enforcement. And as many have argued repeatedly for a long period of time, that's not fair. I agree. It's not fair. So how do we get to a system that balances the needs of residents, gives them some tax relief, and also allows us to manage our precious resource and not have it inundated and overrun, and hence paid parking? Now, I will say, the conversation was quite fluid. We began with this assumption. There are 182 reserved parking spaces. There are 7,500 decals. You do the math. It doesn't work. That's notwithstanding other visitors who just simply take those spaces. It's an enforcement nightmare. We have not been able to get 100% level of enforcement there. We also then talked about, well, let's increase the number of reserved spaces. And that was part of the conversation for a while until that idea was set aside. Then there was a discussion about, well, perhaps we should charge everyone. That was rather quickly rejected. And we ended up with the system that is proposed in the auto contract. The first come, first served. And what we need to do tonight, if council is willing to move forward, is set the rates, which are not included in the contract, for hourly, daily, weekly, and discuss the price of selling external visitor passes for season and whether or not we're going to limit the amount of those. That's how we've arrived there. It's frankly been quite transparent. It's, you can go back and see it. You may not believe so, but it has been. It's all been in public session. So I'll let the rest of council respond to rate structure and what you believe the rates should be.
Is there a proposal on the table regarding rates?
I'll just state the rate schedule that I eventually came to the conclusion of. I will-
Madam Mayor.
Sorry.
Just a point of order.
Please.
Councilwoman Martin brought, someone made a comment tonight about his employment. Several weeks ago, if not months ago, Councilman Martin called me, and we discussed his employment. And he asked me if I thought he had a conflict of interest. Based on our discussion, I did not see where he had any direct financial interests in this vote. He does not get some sort of bonus. It's all the type of software. He's not incentivized. And if that's changed, Councilwoman Martin, please let me know if I'm misstating this in any way.
That's a good point, counsel. I'm happy to go on record publicly tonight. If you want to ask me the required legal questions, I'm happy to answer those on record.
Yeah, I mean, I'm satisfied based, but we'll get it on the records. As you heard, Mr. Martin, there's been some, at least one comment that I heard tonight concerning your employment. So could you just tell us who your employer is? Who do you work for?
I am employed by IBM.
Okay. And auto, the contract before us, the software they use, is IBM the proprietor of that software?
It is not. They use Amazon Web Services.
Okay. Do you have any financial ties to Amazon Web Services?
I do not.
Okay. Do you, in your opinion, have any financial direct benefit? Would you receive any direct financial benefit if auto was selected as the parking vendor?
I would not.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I'm satisfied that under North Carolina law, Councilman Martin does not have a conflict of, financial conflict of interest and therefore is not required to be recused. And since the comment was made tonight, I want the public to know, and I don't know where to look for the cameras. Mr. Martin brought that to my attention several weeks ago, if not two months ago. So I think in all fairness, that needs to be made public, particularly based on the public comment tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
And I didn't mean to interrupt, but before he engaged in deliberations, I wanted to get all of that out on the record.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
No. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
As council member-
Rate schedule.
Oh, yeah.
Back to rate schedule.
As Councilmember Bach had mentioned, there have been discussions amongst council and staff for many months, many hours. What we have shown and received publicly is only a small portion of the complex information and points of view. And I will say that I'm happy that we actually came with different points of view. Every council member had an opinion or an approach. We worked diligently to reconcile those on the belief that we were acting in the best interest of residents. We have identified, as Councilmember Bach pointed out, that with over 7,500 decals and only 180 spaces, you were actually competing against yourselves for a parking space. And there were several occasions leading up to tonight where residents would say, I have a decal and I can't find parking. So we created this illusion years ago with these decals that that meant you would always find a parking space. And that is unfortunate. And enforcement has always been an issue with these spaces. I don't know if any of you heard the chief's report from the summer. They did the best they could. Many of their violations that they did write citations for were, guess what? For decals. Wow. Expired decals on our own residence vehicles. That was a good bit of the violations that were reported in those reserved spaces. So part of this moving forward is trying to figure out, how do we enable enforcement? And enforcement will come in the form of the police department still doing enforcement, but now the vendor partners with us for enforcement. And that's significant, right? How do we manage these spaces? Traditionally, in peak season, where do people park? Anywhere where they believe there's a parking space. So yes, when we refer to protecting property, identifying public safety issues, parking anywhere you want to because you think it's a parking space creates blind spots, creates pedestrian hazard when they're trying to cross the street with their chairs and their kids, right? Furthermore, the more we increase reserve spots, you're taking those spots out of a parking system. That again, how will we enforce them? We don't enforce 180 spots today. How would you expect us to enforce 300, or 500, or 1,000 spots in the future? We're just not equipped to do that. So in the end, we came up with a fee schedule that I think is very accommodating and fair. The first part of the fee schedule, and we said this, I believe, last month, and we have consensus across the council, your decal will be honored for this season. You have a decal, you can park at no cost to you because you've already invested in the decal program. That's a big first step, I believe, for year one, is there's no financial burden to residents with a decal for parking. Then the next part of that is, so what do we charge visitors who want to come here for the day, or a couple of days, or a week, right? And so I was actually at a lower fee schedule, but through collaborating with my peers, we were able to get to what I believe is a common ground, which is $5 an hour, $20 a day, $80 a week, and $160 for an annual pass with a cap of only 1,000 annual passes being available for outside residents. So that's where my position is currently in terms of the fee schedule. I'm at 5, 20, 80, 160.
Thank you.
I can agree to that, except that I think the annual passes should maybe be higher than that. And I'm hoping for, I mean, I'm just saying that for discussion. Even 175, 200. Residents are free. So for annual passes, shouldn't they be higher than 160, maybe?
I think he was proposing 160.
I'm at 160.
Excuse me. Yeah, you just, you said 160.
Right.
That's what I wrote down.
If you'd like to propose another number, then-
I would like to propose 175.
So we have 160.
Or the 1,000 out of town people?
Still 1,000 cap.
Excuse me. Let us have this conversation, please.
My turn?
Go ahead.
I bit my tongue. I waited my turn. I wrote it all down, so I'll get it right. This entire scenario, I've had reservations. All along, I've said, I need to know the specifics. The devil is in the detail. Now we are being asked to vote on a contract entirely different from what we were first pursuing. Why? I fought, and I held out until I got an agreement that Oak Island permit holders for $10 annually would not be charged. I smiled that day. I wanted specifics. I wanted transparency, and I wanted details. When this started, there were 182 decal parking spots, and I kept saying I wanted to double that. I wanted 364. I wanted to get to that detail. I was told to vote for the paid parking program and wait for the details later. Some were willing to go to 300 decal spots. I thought we were moving in the right direction. I kept voting no, or I abstained. I wanted specifics. Finally, once paid parking was voted, I had to then choose which of the three paid parking companies am I going to go with. For two reasons, I went with auto. I asked auto how they could make a profit with only 1,200 spaces and 7,500 Oak Island decals. I was told by auto that they felt we had 2,000 parking spaces rather than 1,200. So for that reason, I voted for auto. Now, the contract that we have in front of us says only 1,200 spots. No attempt to secure the other 800 spots have materialized either by auto or by our town. That's unacceptable. No second thought given to protecting the decal spots. No signs will disappear for decal parking. This is atrocious. Who are we looking out for? There's 1,200 parking spaces. No more right-of-way parking. In the past, when a decal holder could not park in a decal spot, they would go to the right-of-way. No more right-of-way parking. Now we're giving away, we're talking about giving away 1,000 spots to people from Fayetteville, from Charlotte, from BSL, from Ohio, in an already crowded parking spot. That's ludicrous for me. First come, first served, no decal spots. But with that expectation of 2,000 spaces, taking away decal spots and not having enough spaces does not protect the Oak Island taxpayers. You've got a decal. So what are we doing? I now feel our residents will be driving around constantly, looking for a space that cannot be found. What happened to the 364 decals? What happened to the 300 decals? What happened to the 2,000 spaces? Selling a large number of passes to out-of-towners is nothing but a money grab. And what does it make, makes it that much harder for Oak Island taxpayers to find a place to park? I don't factor in Charlotte, or Ohio, or Raleigh when I try to figure out what's best for Oak Island. I factor in Oak Island taxpayers. This will only happen if this council allows it. It will only happen if these five people vote for out-of-control, out-of-town sales. It falls on five people sitting up here on this podium to take away the reserved spots. Me, I will not vote for that. If that happens, where will our neighbors with free parking decals park? I'm almost finished. When are we going to honor and protect the people of Oak Island? The town belongs to the people of Oak Island.
Yes.
We fought for and prevailed for free parking for our residents with decals, and then taking every step to give away every available parking spot. It's ludicrous. We need to have a year, and please think about this, we need to have one year to see what happens, see how it inconveniences our people. I am in favor of $5 an hour, $25 a day, $125 a week. Stop. No out-of-town parking. If you got 1,200 parking spaces, give me the 300 we first talked about. 300 places set aside for Oak Island residents. Everybody else can come. They can look for parking spots. What happens to residents first? It says, we say we listen to everybody. We hear what you have to say, and then you come back here and say, you listen to what we have to say, and then you ignore us. We've got a chance now. Five people on this council have a chance to say, we heard you. We will honor you. As for me-
Parren of votes. Excuse me.
As for me, I'm going to vote no. I want $5 an hour, $25 a day, no out-of-town parking passes issued. I can live with that. That's my compromise.
Excuse me.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
I think Councilman Craft's position is-
Excuse me.
If you don't mind. Thank you, sir. I can support $5, $20 a day, and although I would prefer it to be higher than 80, I could support that. I support $175. I am troubled by the 1,000 number as a cap, but again, in the interest of striking a compromise, I'm willing to support it to see if it works. If it doesn't work, we can change it. This process allows, the contract allows for us to make changes while in motion, and certainly at the end of the first year, we'll look at the analytics. So I will support your proposal and the bulk of yours, Councilman Martin.
John, what do you have? You have 5?
20, 80, which is what Councilman Martin proposed. I support Councilwoman Bell's 175 for anyone buying a next-
With a cap of 1,000.
Visitor annual pass.
Hang on, hang on, please. Let us have this con, we heard you. Now let us have the conversation based on the input, please.
I share Councilman Martin's understanding that all decals currently purchased will be honored.
Excuse me. Excuse me, please. I think we also had a conversation about those who do not yet have, or are not in our system, that because it was a two-year program, $20 per vehicle, we're down to one year left in that obligation or that commitment, that others are able to, these are, these are people who pay taxes on the island. We're not talking about anyone outside of that. So we're talking about the non-resident taxpayers, the part-time, what we talk about is part-time residents. I think we also had a conversation that they would also be eligible, along with residents who have not bought a parking decal in the past, is how we referred to it, that they would also be able to register their vehicles at $10, which is an equitable situation. Am I wrong there? Was that part of the agreement?
I believe you're correct.
Okay. I just wanted to put that in. So that's one point. Councilman Blaylock, do you have a, before I speak?
No, I agree with what Mr. Martin said.
Okay. That's all I can say.
May I call a question?
I have one more thing I'd like to say. Page six of the auto contract.
Oh.
Proposal stated, on a cost burden to leverage visitors to offset costs. Where is that taking place?
There wasn't a motion.
Was there a motion on the table?
There is no motion on the table.
It was not seconded.
We were talking about the tax rates. There wasn't a motion.
All right. Page second. Page seven of the proposal stated, get this one, free, reduced fee, or standard parking for selected parking areas, including resident-only areas. That is what the proposal said. It's nowhere to be found in our contract. I hated hearing the word bait and switch, but I'll say it. Wow.
All right. So here's my question to council, and I rarely weigh in as mayor, because I respect the purview of council as having the vote on these issues. But I will register this question. So we are talking about $5 an hour, $20 a day, $80 a week, and I'm glad we upped the 175 cap in terms of-
Well, we had two that were 175 and two that were 160.
And 160. But it's more than earlier numbers that I've seen discussed this week. But you have to appreciate it. 80, $80 for a week, excuse me, $80 a week that someone is paying for four days and getting three days for free. And these are people who are renting homes, many of which come with a golf cart as a perk that would be registered in the system. So I think we can do better on that weekly. Those are the people that come and stay. They're not the people outside of our community who come for the day to enjoy the beach. Those are, those are different individuals than those who would be eligible for a so-called season pass. But what seemingly to me, correct me if I'm wrong, but if I'm looking at this and we have 1,200 spots, there's room to expand, at least according to the vendor, somewhere more than 1,200 spots. So if what we're talking about, and based on the input that I've received this week and hearing everyone that spoke tonight, if it's a financial consideration and we can find some, at least the number of reserved spots that we have, we're concerned about the math. I think we can do better with the weekly rate, number one. The cap of 1,000, that's a big number. So I, my personal view is, I think we owe it to our citizens with that influx graded. At least it's capped, because currently there's no cap. Everybody comes. But I think there is room in this to, even if we add, let's say there's 200 reserved spots, or whatever that number is, that there's room then to add 200 spots that, for visitors and regardless of who they are, whether they are weekly, would be a weekly permit, to offset rekeeping, at least in this first year, which I consider equivalent to a restaurant's soft opening. Let's, we don't have to change everything it wants, is what I want to ask council to consider. And consider keeping the reserved spots in place. If necessary, we can add that same number of spots that can be monetized so that it's a wash. Please point out the fallacy in my thinking. But I think there's really room to negotiate a solution here that fits everybody's needs.
I'm going to point out the biggest elephant in the room. Why do we care how many spaces we sell to people in Charlotte, and Raleigh, and Ohio, and Virginia? Is that a money grab? Why do we care? There's no spaces for them. Part of our start of this was to control traffic coming over the bridge. But now we're saying, 1,000 of you, come on over. We got 1,200 spots. You can have them first.
So let me say this.
We're $175.
Whoopie.
Let me say this. So let's compare what we're talking about, a paid parking system, or a permitted parking system. Those 1,000 people are coming now for free. So at least we've put a cap on that. Those people are coming to the beach now, and they park any damn place they want to.
No, they park in our right-of-way that we took away from ourselves and them.
Okay. So the, what, and, I'm sorry, I can't take your question. This is council discussion, but I appreciate. But I think there is a win-win here, where we can retain for this first year, where we can take data. And the only reason not to have the reserved spaces for our citizens is if we learn that they're not used, then it's an empty space. But I don't think for the six months out of the year, that's going to be the case. So what I'm, what I'm asking council is, if it's a money thing, then we add the spaces on the other end, and we find the number, the same number on the outside. But I believe it's technologically available or doable, and I think it's worth, it's worth considering. And I ask you to consider that.
With all due respect, I'll make this motion. So $5 an hour, $20 a day, $80 a week, $175 for an annual pass. The administration will be charged with finding 182 additional spaces if possible, and they will be reserved spaces per your recommendation.
Excuse me.
Thank you. Is there a second?
What's the hiccup?
I would like, if that motion did not carry, I'd like to make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
I wouldn't.
I haven't made it yet.
Seconded, John's. So this gives us the ability to retain, so you have the same thing you currently have. Is that not what you've asked for?
Don't buy it, people, you don't.
Hold on, wait a minute. There's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Call the vote. But, you know.
There's a second.
Are you the mayor?
Excuse me.
Call the question, Mayor.
It's a matter of protocol. Mr. Edwards? I've got it. Thank you. I appreciate it. So we have a second to the motion. John, or Lisa, if you have that written down, could you-
Well, I wanted to clarify. So the numbers were $5 an hour, $20 a day, $80 a week, and 175 for an annual pass. Was there a cap? Okay. And then adding 182 spaces. Do you want to clarify that that means there will be-
If found, would be reserved.
364 decal spaces.
Well, we currently have 182 reserved spaces.
I understand that. But I just wanted to make sure in the motion that it was clear that those will be retained as well.
Yes, but if council wanted to add additional spaces, to offset what we're keeping as the reserved spaces, that's a possibility.
That's what the motion effectively will do if we find the spaces.
Additional space, with keeping the, retaining the current reserved spots as they are.
Yes.
Yeah. The intent has always been to ask staff before year two to go find 2,000 parking spaces. So for discussions to imply that we are never going to go get those 2,000 parking spaces is irresponsible. Our intent in our discussions-
I didn't imply that.
To say that that was our intent at 2,000.
Excuse me. Our intent in our discussions-
Don't put words in our mouth.
Bill, one at a time.
Our intent in our discussions has always been, before year two, we've asked staff to go find-
Additional spaces.
Additional spaces.
But what I'm-
That's- So, that has always been the intent.
And I appreciate that. What I'm trying to do is to honor what you've asked for, to retain the reserved spots that are currently there. Consider this first year a soft opening. That's all I'm, and we are going to learn, we're not going to get it right. I'm going to tell you that right now. So, we have a motion on the table and a second. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Well, let's have some discussion. I haven't discussed.
Well, we discussed after the point of order. Lisa?
I mean, the rules...
Excuse me, we're having, I'm sorry, but you cannot inject. No, I'm sorry. As much as I appreciate you in being here, but you're out of order. Lisa?
Sir, sir, please let me answer the question that was asked. Thank you. The question was to call the question, and the rules or procedure state that there should be 20 minutes of discussion following a motion. However, I mean, it's, these are council rules or procedure. I mean, you had your discussion ahead of time, but then, now you have a motion. So, the rules do say 20 minutes.
We have 20 minutes additional of discussion.
If, if that's what council wants to take.
Okay. Bill, go ahead.
And I agree with that interpretation.
Thank you, Mr. Eads. I didn't mean to exclude you.
Unfortunately, whichever way you guys want to look at it, the prior discussion time does not eat into that post-motion time limit.
Thank you, and that's what I was wondering.
Yes, ma'am.
We're trying to...
What makes sense to me is, we keep saying, "This is a soft opening. This is a trial run. Let's take a look at it and see what happens." Those are wonderful words. Now, let's do this. Let's not sell 1,000 open-ended passes to people from Ashland, Kentucky. Let's do that next year, after we figure out where all our problems are. For this first year, let's have 300 set aside passes for our residents, and then, whatever hourly rate you all want to come up with, I'll compromise and agree with. But let's get off this 1,000 people taking our 1,200 parking spaces. That's ludicrous. That's, and, and I hate to say, I hate to say this, because I don't want this to be my image, but doggone it, they're peeing on your shoes and telling you it's raining. This is not right. They're telling you one thing, they're doing another.
So, if we don't put the 1,000 cap on it, then it's open-ended.
250. I can compromise at 250. For that lady that lives in Southport that wants to walk on the beach at 10 o'clock in the morning, let her buy a pass for $150, $175. 200 passes to these out-of-towners. But worrying about renters that come from Ohio, and Charlotte, and Raleigh, I can't ever agree.
Bill?
So, they just...
Bill, the people coming, other than within a drivable distance, are paying a weekly rate. They're not coming by the day. So, that's one thing.
They might come for a month at a time, two months at a time.
But they're, then, those are the individuals, you're right, who are coming, and they're paying a seasonal rate. But now, they're paying nothing. So, they're coming anyway.
A thousand's a big number, folks.
Well, it's not a different amount, is what I'm trying to share.
If you don't put the cap on it, then they can come and pay the $80 or $100, or $20 a day. It's not going to stop them from coming.
And they're, and they're still going to pay. What I'm trying to do is find a middle ground, a compromise, because nothing has, in this thing, nothing has changed with... Nothing has changed from what we experienced this past year. It's exactly the same model, except the people that are coming for the week, they come, and they pay nothing. What I'm trying to get to is to retain our reserved spots, is what you asked us to do. We can't stop people coming from the beach. They come now. I'm asking for council to, and which is the motion on the table, is to retain the reserved spots that currently exist. They will not go away in this first year. And then, we'll look at the data. We get weekly reports, we'll get monthly reports, and we'll get seasonal reports. We'll look at the data, and you'll have other opportunities to provide input when we consider the contract for next year. This is a one-year contract.
Can we vote, please, on this?
Well, there's 20 minutes of discussion. Is there anything else to be said?
I have nothing else to say. I've said my piece, but I'm going to say one last thing. When are we going to protect the Oak Island taxpayers?
Well, didn't we just do that?
No, we did not just do that. We gave away 1,000 spots to everybody.
It's a two-year.
I can vote. I can vote.
It's a two-year.
It's a two-year, ma'am.
It's a one-year contract. But, Bill, they're coming now.
They're coming now, and they had right-of-way parking. We took away right-of-way parking. There used to be thousands of parking spots. So, let's say 2,500, there was right-of-way parking. We took all that away. Now, there's 1,200 spots, and that is it. We've sold 7,500 decals. Probably going to sell another 1,000 or so in the next month. There's 1,200 spots, and we're saying, "How about finding 1,000 more people to have a permit?"
Wow. All right. So, is there anything else to be said on this issue? And, Mr. Kelly?
Just a reminder, it's a two-year contract in front of you, ma'am.
Is it two-year? Thank you. But it doesn't mean, so the parameters of the contract for the audience's information, we change the parameters of the contract with the vendor at any point. But I, I will continue, it's a two-year contract. I stand corrected. So, but the commitment is there by your council to retain the...
Ma'am, this is...
I'm sorry, but this is deteriorating quickly. And if we have to clear the room to continue the discussion, I will ask that we do that. Out of deep respect, we heard you, we were quiet, but you've got to let us have this discussion. Please respect the process. So, with this, Mr. Kelly, I want to ask that we look for additional spaces throughout the summer, working with the vendor to reconcile where those spaces can be.
In the map that was shown earlier by Matt, we've already identified other areas that we can enlarge the parking. That is something we're looking at doing through the year with the contractor.
Okay. That's what I'm asking.
So, when council, we didn't know if you were going forward with this or not going forward with this. But at a point of conclusion, when you say, if you do go ahead and vote for this night, then you would give us direction to start working with the vendor to go ahead and start adding the extra spots. There are certain hot areas that we know from last year and previous years where, as Councilman Kraft pointed out, where people go park now that's not in the right-of-way, we've got to look at other areas to be able to put parking within the right-of-way to see if we can place paid parking in those areas.
Okay.
So, that is the direction that council's been giving staff through this whole process.
So, so, just for the public's sake, what I'm hearing is it is our intent to increase the number of spaces as we can. We're not waiting until next year to expand the parking spaces. Is that what I'm hearing?
I mean, that's been what we've discussed the whole time.
Correct.
The goal was always to try to get to a number, which was 2,000, what we had come up with originally, when we had the survey done, and then, the vendor has gone out and looked at areas as well. And the chief identified different hot streets, and those were where we had the most problems last year. And those are the areas that we will go back into, that we've said, and look at placing paid parking, or parking, or whatever's going to be decided tonight, in those locations.
And what is the likelihood that those spaces will be added, say, by May 1, when it gets really hot and heavy here?
We've already got the grader on order, so the auto grader, or the motor grader will come in, will identify the spaces. If you approve the contract with the vendor, where we would go to first, and then, staff would start putting it, because it's up to staff to put those spots in, not the vendor.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. I appreciate that. So, Lisa, if we can do a roll call vote, please.
Okay.
Can we just have a clarification on the motion? I want to make sure that...
Thank you, one more time.
Because I did hear Councilmember Vox include in his motion to instruct staff to accelerate the timeframe to identify additional parking spaces. So, I just want to make sure we're clear.
That's why I asked the question, I did, and Mr. Kelly, and he said, "We are." So, but go ahead.
Okay. The motion included setting rates at $5 per hour, $20 per day, $80 per week, 175 for an annual pass with a cap of 1,000 annual passes, retaining the current decal spaces, and add an additional 182 spaces for additional resident decal spaces.
Which will come anyway, as we add spaces as identified by Mr. Kelly. Can I also ask that we consider where they would be additional, where we can actually expand the reserved spaces? So, if we're adding 500 spaces, where is it we might be able to add reserve spots to add to the 182, so that our 8,000-plus current sticker holders can find a place to park? Is that an unreasonable request?
No.
Well, is that part of the motion?
No, I'm asking for feasibility.
As long as it's distinct from the motion on the floor.
So, is there an amended, do we need to do an amended motion? I need a council member to do that if we're to ask to expand the number of reserved spaces in proportion to the others.
I'm all out of motions. There's one on the floor. Someone else cares to amend, they can.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Lisa, if you proceed with the roll call vote, please.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Pretend, Cory Buck?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Kraft?
No.
Councilmember Blaylock?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Do we need to do now by way of directing staff to find additional...
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Hey, Mayor, can we take a quick recess, please?
Yes.
That's a good idea.
All right, we'll take a five-minute break?